Wednesday morning, it is September 17th, 2025. This is the Lakeville Library Board of Trustees meeting being held at the library on Precinct Street. With us, I'll let people introduce, I'm Patrick Marshall, Chair of the Trustees.
I'm Ruth Gross, trustee. Jennifer Jones, library director.
Nancy Lefayev, trustee.
And we have Lake Cam filming as well. I will, I guess I should have called the meeting to order at 9:01 a.m. I will call the meeting to order and we will waive the secretary's report for this month and catch up next month. Financial report.
So, we just get the one very big water bill. Um, so that is off again. However, I would like to report that I got a normal water bill just this week for seventy something dollars. So, I don't believe they have been putting on the sprinklers as much. You can see the.
Is it just the automatics?
Yeah, it might be the automatic or they might have come to put it on for the new areas. Cause I think that's where they were gonna focus on anyway, they weren't gonna do the back anyway. Um, but other than that, I think the budget is just on track. Nothing much to report. Uh, in terms of state aid, I just finished up and have for Patrick to sign the financial report. And I'll send that off today. Um, and then with service, I'm still waiting on, you know, trying to get some information. And then, uh, in terms of gifts, we had donation for a brick for Carol Magnar from the staff and trustees. Uh, so that, we did that in June, she finished off at the end of June. And then, um, in September, we had Brotherhood of Shewood Allied Craftsman give their usual fifty dollars. So, I sent a letter off to thank them for that. That's all I have to report for gifts so far.
I'll go right back to your free directory report.
Okay, so I noticed the standard times bill is now coming monthly, we used to get it and it would be a whole year. I don't know if this is because Gannett's changing the way they're doing things. I also got a notice that the, the paper was going from sixty-five dollars a month to seventy-five a month. So, they're all going up like ten dollars. And also on the recent statement was a nine dollar paper statement fee, which I am a little bit mad about. Nine dollars is a lot for a paper statement, but what does that mean?
Oh, instead of an electronic.
Electronic payment, they're all trying to move you to electronic payments. I've noticed this is a trend lately of having a paper statement fee.
Well, but is that based on whether or not the town will do an electronic payment?
So, I don't know that they do electronic payments. They do have a P card now with the new procurement policy. So, I could possibly get it put onto the P card for a regular payment to avoid that nine dollar paper statement fee. I'll have to do some more research with Erica, the charger.
Yeah.
You don't have the standard times coming through your magazine job or?
No, I didn't know that was an option.
Cause we do through, um, not EBSCO, we have the other one.
I have WTCO.
Yes.
Okay, maybe I can check into doing that.
We have it through them, so the invoices, I just throw them away when they come in from standard times.
Okay.
So, you're gonna look at other options, whether or not they do it electronically, whether or not it can go through the magazine.
On the P card or do it through COCs, yeah, cause it's, it's a little insane how much it's getting to be.
In twelve, it's like, it's a book or maybe a book and a half, yeah, or materials.
It's gonna eat into the line, you know, the periodicals. Um, summer reading wrapped up last month, we had participation numbers for the tracking part of it slightly down. Preschool age group finished at a really good rate, but completion rates were down for school age children and teens. Teresa is considering changing up the summer reading tracking program for those age groups next year. Sort of for more immediate gratification, like each week they might have a small prize. Um, attendance numbers at programs were good, storytime numbers were steady and music time was popular. And the two bubble dance parties were well attended, even though we had to reschedule one, it was postponed from the July date. And she had a really good turnout for the family puzzle race, they had a good time with eight families competing to win a thousand piece puzzle.
And do we know who our winners were?
I don't know.
Is it in her report?
It might be in her report, she, um, she said it may become a summer staple, should be close to the end, her report. Um, stuff date almost sleepover had fewer participants, but it allowed for the teen volunteers who were helping out to be more creative in their photos. Um, and this summer, we had an increase of twenty-two programs over last year and eight hundred and three more attendees. And part of that is also a change in how she kept statistics. Previously, she was just counting the kids, but now she's counting everybody who's in the room, like caregivers included. Um, we did learn sadly that Bella, our therapy dog for Read to a Dog, had passed away very suddenly. Um, Alice had been in touch about continuing the program with Remy, her other therapy dog, when she's ready. And we sent Alice a card to express our condolences. Um, fall has gotten underway, summer reading books are slowly trickling back in. And Teresa will be going through that collection to remove any books that haven't been on the list in a while. And finally, Teresa is meeting with youth services librarians and sales today. Um, there were previously meetings among youth services staff. And we offered to host the first one of the new round, which is this afternoon. She will also, um, be sending out information to teen services library and they requested to have a meeting as well. So, she kind of volunteered and got stuck with that job.
Just run our focus too.
Yeah, um, for summer reading for adults, we had nine participants complete the bingo game. And I had bought a bunch of little tchotchke fries, so everybody got a little something. Uh, anniversary events went really well, we had a good crowd for our cake celebration. And we shared leftover cake with the police and fire station. The friends helped out with serving cake and ice cream. The reception was a little smaller, but it was nice to catch up with Jamie Tibbets and Jamie Verros, the former directors. Team trivia had two players and they came to be a team, but they decided to play each other. So, the trophy went home to their house anyway. So, uh, Demi Graham Laird enjoyed visiting with novelties last month and we're considering doing another author visit in that style. We have an offer from the Mas Center for the Book. For some of the, um, Mas Book Awards winning authors will do a tour and they will pay for the program. So, I thought that might be a good way to get an author in as well. Um, I'm starting a new nonfiction group on Monday, so I gotta finish the book. Um, so we're reading, um, a book about climate change this time. The Heat Will Kill You First is actually the title, so it's a really great title, really, really positive. Um, and then Novelties Book Group meets early this, this month, they meet on Tuesday next week. Monday, August 29th, Teresa's having a craftapalooza to clean out her craft closet. On Monday, October 6th, we have author Howard Fisherman, who is, I'm talking about the music of Connie Converse, who is an interesting figure in folk music. She kind of disappeared off the scene after having mild success. Um, so he's, he wrote a book about that. And then on Thursday, October 9th, Christina Reford is doing the book page pumpkin craft and that registration is full.
I signed up for that.
And it should be a lot of fun, she's, it's gonna be a lot of cutting though.
Yes, you have to be ready to scissor.
What, what does book page?
You take a book and they make it into a sculpture, a paper sculpture, a, 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 an old book that's not, you know, like a paper bag or something.
Christmas trees have, so, yeah, they might do. Onto buildings and grounds, the plumber fixed the leak inside the boiler room, but he is still set to return for the outside leak when the parts are in. He will also look at the water heater in the staff bathroom to see if flushing it will solve the debris and brown coloring we have. Um, Burgess Pest sprayed for two yellow jacket nests last week. And they're gonna return for regular service and to check on the nest, I noticed there's, there's still activity in the nest, so hopefully they'll be able to take care of that again. Um, Paul has fixed the gallery door, it was the weather stripping that was worn and needed replacing, so now it closes properly, you don't have to pull up on it. Um, the swing arm on Lake Cam's office door broke off from the wall, so Paul is gonna fix that when he has proper parts. I'm not sure how that happened, but it.
It's not in use, or rarely in use, right?
I, well, I don't, I don't know how the swing arm broke away completely from the door, so. But Jose said he'd take care of it and, um, Paul, uh, he was already in contact with Paul, so it's all set. Earth and Water sent the contract for closing the waterfalls for the season at four hundred dollars. So, Andrew Circo, um, our town administrator, had mentioned that he's gonna be signing off on all town contracts now. Or if there is a certain threshold, he'll be sending them to the select board to sign. So, the contract has been signed and we just have to indicate if we want an early or late fall closing. I'm leaning towards early because they said they're gonna start in mid-October. So, I'll just mention on the sheet sometime in October would be great, you know, when you start. And I think this year it'll be nice if we have them on for the festival.
Right, I usually, we do it after the festival.
So, um, hopefully we can get that all squared away. And I had to make an emergency purchase of a refrigerator. Um, the staff room refrigerator is getting replaced next week. I went to get an ice cream bar from the freezer in there and it was soft. So, I looked into it and it appears that that model was manufactured in 2005.
Yes, it would be over twenty years old.
So, I think it's time to say goodbye to the refrigerator in the staff room. And it, it made me think about the, the other one too, we're gonna have to think about that one. Unfortunately, because this one is a small size, it's like one of those, and it's not apartment size, but it's smaller, so it's a special, kind of a special order. So, I did go through like consumer reports to check to see what was a good rated model. And so I went kind of with the middle of the road, it was a seven hundred and one dollar refrigerator. Um, the GE, which would have replaced what we have a GE, it was over a thousand dollars, so I said no thank you to that. And so Jen Jewell at the DPW, um, they actually, we used DPW's Home Depot account just to order it, get the delivery all set up. They're gonna haul away the old one, so everything's done and it's just under eight hundred dollars for the whole.
So, next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday. So, we'll have to have everything out and.
So, a lot of ice cream eating.
Yeah, there's still the ice cream sandwiches in there. And I clicked it up to the higher, so it would stay, it was on the middle, so.
See, that probably gets opened daily multiple times where the, I went in the staff, uh, library gallery room.
That one did make some funny noises though, so.
Are they the same brand?
I think both are GE, yes. And obviously for replacing that one, it seemed like it'd be closer to five hundred or six hundred, it wasn't as expensive as the small order, yeah. So, um, I just, I never, already mentioned I completed the financial report. Um, I got a thing from PLA that they're going to have the conference next year in Minneapolis. So, I'd like to think about attending that if possible. Um, and I signed up for the Massachusetts Library System Annual Meeting on Wednesday, November 5th at Devon's Commons. It appears like it's an all-day event.
Will be, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I wanted to go check that out, I don't know if you want me to send you the info, so if you wanted to sign up to go, Nancy, or, or you still be recovering?
It's probably sooner than I'll be able to drive anyway.
Okay, November 5th.
At Devon's Commons?
Yeah, it's a Wednesday.
We'll say they're usually, um, you've been before, haven't you?
Not, I don't think there were annual meeting I haven't been.
They're usually really good, the speakers, I can't make it this year, but the speakers are usually, um.
Well, I think I'm gonna go then.
Okay.
You wanna go together?
Good.
Yeah, I'll see, I'll send you the signup info.
Okay.
Well, send it to me too then and I'll see how soon you have to give them an answer.
And then, uh, town meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, November 12th, I don't know if everybody saw the change in date from December. It was supposed to be December, I think, and then they ended up changing it because our moderator couldn't make it. Um, friends met on September 8th, they discussed upcoming dates for events and fundraisers, their next meeting is October 6th. And in the gallery currently is an exhibit, The Language of Light, featuring fine art photography by Dan Barber. The reception was held Saturday, September 6th. And the next exhibit in is Life in Colors, featuring acrylic paintings by Elsie Goldstein. And we actually have Elsie coming to do a paint night program during her exhibition too, so nice little, nice little showcase for her, yeah.
And that's it.
All right. Uh, policy, let's review gift policy.
So, this is just cleaned up from the last time you had seen it, I added in within the policy statement to say gifts and donations help enrich. And then, under the guidelines for donated materials, you wanted to add, once donated items become property of the Lakeville Public Library. And no conditions may be imposed by the donor relating to any gift. Is there any other changes you would like to see in the policy?
No, I think it's good. Is Chair gonna intervene in motion?
I was just looking really quick on it. Now, yes, I'll entertain motion for approval of the gifts donations policy.
So moved, second.
Um, the only question I had, and this is just more of a, really a question because it's, is in the monetary guidelines when I was looking at this and I'm trying to see. Does, do monetary donations have to have approval of the board or no, I mean?
I think we've always allowed the director to, if there was a concern, she would bring it to us, but otherwise.
I just wasn't sure if there was a.
If it was, um, something questionable, but so far, I don't think we, I don't think we've ever acted.
I guess I'm thinking it's more like, we've approved the big, like the big donations that come in, I'm not talking about.
No, the memorial, the small memorial gifts that were, that people donated for financing.
Yeah.
We just accept automatically, cause usually there's somebody who's been a very active patron or somebody who has really cared about the library.
Or a memorial.
Yeah, no, it just, we're set up different than I've dealt with before, so I wasn't sure, I know we've approved like the.
We accepted large.
Larger donations, so I didn't know if that had to be.
Sometimes we actually, um, attached usage to that money or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, most of the stuff I've been getting, like the Brotherhood always leaves a fifty dollar check on the way out.
That would be.
They're just, um, you know, under five hundred dollars type thing, yeah.
So, there doesn't have to be something in here with that, you don't think, or?
Unless you say any donation over five hundred doll, or a thousand doll, probably a thousand. Nine hundred ninety-nine dollars, which could be approved by the Board of Trustees.
So, we could add it, um. Maybe after the first sentence?
Yeah, it should be right after services.
And again, I, I just bring that up only cause it's, I mean, we're set up different than I've.
So, would it be the motion be, and, and any donation over nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars? It's just, if it was a thousand or more, you'd wanna, um, the board would.
Or you could say under one thousand.
Under a thousand.
Will be accepted, larger donations.
The Board of Trustees would need to vote on acceptance.
Yeah, that sounds.
I'm so moved.
Okay, um.
Second.
Second, first, all right, any other discussion?
Do you want me to? Any donation under one thousand dollars will be accepted by the director.
Okay.
Semi-colon, larger donations. Will be approved by the trustees.
By the Board of Trustees.
Accepted by the Board of Trustees.
I'll get the actual writing of that for the minutes.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds, I'm just saying, cause we do approve, or we have approved the larger.
And I mean, a memorial for, you know, Born Steams only eight hundred, but I still want it because it requires.
And usually the total of the amount, if it's from numerous people, is probably under five hundred or something.
Well, but I think like, because as you're saying Jen, the, um, that required something actually put on the building and changed.
Do you wanna change it to five hundred?
Why don't you, or my suggestion would be, um, any donate, you had it worded right, any donation over a thousand will be approved by the trustees.
Yeah.
Under a thousand may be approved, may require approval.
Okay, so any donation under a thousand dollars will be accepted by the director and may require approval by the trustees?
Yeah. Because again, if you have something that wants to donate.
Larger donations will be accepted by the Board of Library Trustees.
I think that, that works, cause then if there's any stipulations, then you shouldn't. If somebody wants to put a stipulation on the, like a five hundred dollar donation, then that is a little harder than just, uh, yeah.
I think if somebody is just like, here's five hundred dollars, just because, here's a check.
Take it.
I'll just say thank you and I'll write them a nice little, and I'll let you know.
Yeah, yeah.
They do report all the gifts, but, but yeah, if you want like a special, like I have them hold off on the check until I talk to you, I can definitely.
Well, that makes, yeah, and that makes sense, cause like you said, the Dr. Bornstein was an actual, they want something with the building or, you know, somebody wants, I, I'll donate this, but I want you to do. Then that becomes a little more.
Recognition.
In relation to this, I was thinking it would be nice to make a brochure, because we don't have anything about, you know, you mentioned the shelving for a thousand dollars. If we could sort of mention what people can do.
We have a brochure from the Capital Campaign that talked about that, so we could find that in the file cabinet or something. You could look and see what we did initially, but that is over twenty years old.
Yeah, so somebody wants to. Somebody wants to leave a legacy or something, you can give them that.
Legacies are nice.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, you know, my site's high and everything, so. Do you want me to bring this back?
I think we.
No, I think.
Okay.
With the addition, we, we voted to accept it, right?
We haven't voted yet, but.
We're voting to accept it.
So, I have a first, I have a second, any further discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions, all right. Uh, gallery policy.
So, um.
Shall I speak to this?
Yeah, Ruth, Ruth will speak to this one. We have not updated our policy, which is on the website, in many years. I have not been kind enough to give you the one with all the yellow that shows what changes I made. But, um, basically, we, we did a lot of bullet points because people read bullet points, people don't read prose. Uh, and, um, I think this includes everything that we feel is pertinent. Um, for people to know before they apply for a show.
No, I think the whole thing about exhibit acceptance is worded very well.
Thank you, probably Betsy did it, but thank you.
She's not here, so.
More Betsy, thank you.
Some of these things, the things that we do not, we respectfully request people not put in their exhibit.
Oh, actually, I did like that.
You could put into a private exhibit or at a gallery or anything like that, but because we have the multi-generational thing, we have to be more sensitive. And also, there's the idea of safety too.
Right, and we've never had, um, an issue with somebody applying, say with his collection of nudes or whatever. But we do from time to time, especially with our high school exhibit, have a lot of the, um, things that they might see in graphic novels or whatever. And there are, you know, space shooter things involved and we just, you know, if it's a weapon, whether it's gonna annihilate somebody or, or shoot them. We're not interested in having it on the walls. Gets a little scary.
Well, this is really nice when I look at it.
I like bottom two, uh, page two artists, that last thing about, um, the ten percent of any sale made through exposure to the great Ponds Gallery.
Yeah, and there's no way for us to, um.
No, we don't enforce, I mean.
To enforce anything, but our artists are more likely to be more generous than less, we found. You know, they don't sell anything, sometimes they, um, send us fifty dollars anyway. They wanna keep us going.
Well, that's really good.
I almost think that the last thing under sale should be bolded, is it bolded already? Like, no item from our personal collection may be listed for sale and any, are removed during the exhibit. That, that was the issue we had before with people deciding that it was not convenient for them to wait to take down.
All the time, that's, especially with group shows, but it's a constant thing that we have people, you know. Oh, I can sell this if the person can take it before Christmas, well, take a picture of it, tell them to wrap it up.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Yeah, you know, I mean, it's just.
And then the anticipation builds until the real thing comes.
Yeah, so we, um, or if, let's say, in October of next year, one of the artists is also showing in the Arts and Music Festival. And she understands that if somebody wants to buy something that's in the gallery, they can't take it home that day. They need to go out and find something else at her, her table, so. But these things have to be said to them each time, we have anticipated because it's never quite right.
Yeah, it's really, really well done.
Thank you.
Thought out. And I did see.
I like the safely mounted on the walls too.
What?
Safe, safely mounted on the walls.
Safely mounted on the walls, yeah.
Well, now that we have the locking system, it makes it even easier.
Well, it is, and we don't use the top locks as much as we should, should. We tell the artisan that they're welcome to them, but they're a real hassle. So, you know, locking them against the, on the bottom tends to make them pretty secure.
All right, uh, so we'll keep reviewing it and take a vote on this for next month. Uh, old business, Lake Cam agreement, updating and adding maintenance responsibilities.
So, I didn't include the Billy Cam agreement, but I do have a list of things that we might want to think about. Because the agreement was from many years ago and has not been updated. Um, and in light of the door thing happening, you know, I sent Paul a work request, not knowing that Jose had already.
Right, we need to have.
Mention it, so.
They need to notify you.
So, I think there needs to be some sort of list of things or a sort of.
This is just for that, the office?
Yeah.
This is the office?
Like who, who's responsible for the physical structure, who's responsible for damage, who's responsible for maintenance. So, I just listed out things like wall repair and painting, piping, HVAC and sprinkler, wiring, windows and doors. I feel like that's all under us because it's facility related, unless they damage it, then it's on them, so.
But painting, I mean, when they built their office, they painted it, they put in the floor.
Right.
Cause it was part of the class.
They ding it up, you know, whatever, should we be responsible?
Well, I mean, I think it's good to spell that out because it's not in the current agreement at all, nothing about maintenance is, it just says they're gonna construct it. They should have access to the kitchen in certain places. Talks about a lot of other things, but not the actual upkeep.
Right.
Right. Well, did our custodian clean it?
Uh, no, I think, I don't think, I think we, um.
They used to leave the trash out.
Yeah, if I recall, that's, they were able to leave their trash out and he would clean that up, but other than that, or empty it, and that's all.
I just don't know if we want to revisit the agreement to rewrite some things, or just.
Additions?
Yeah, I know, and it was through the board of, the select board, too, so.
No, we should probably at least look at it if it's that old.
Yeah, yes.
And even if nothing needs to be changed in it, but still take a look at it.
And maybe this is just an addendum.
Sure.
To it that's voted in, and, um, yeah, so the other thing was just upkeep, you know, cleaning the, also the kitchen area, because I know, I think that had been an issue at one point. Making sure that their stuff was out of the fridge if it was old food.
Yeah, at one point, um, they had employees here, like forty hours a week, and they, um, did use the refrigerator and the sink a lot, and at, at one point, I made a schedule of each month that would go LA CAM Children's Department, um, Gallery, but we never stuck to it, so.
Yeah.
We just kind of.
I just think I can make cleaning supplies available, as long as they're willing to clean up after whatever they do, I think.
Yeah, I think that's, that's sufficient is to clean up after themselves.
This is if they're coming back.
Oh, if, if there's a return.
Yeah, which I think there will be, but I don't know.
No, I don't think they know when, but, I mean, it's good to have this, whether they do or not, in case some other time they don't.
No, let's take a look at the contract, and I would say just.
So this would be on the October agenda?
Yeah, I'll bring in the contract.
And see what your thoughts are, Jen, on it, and.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, future staff meetings.
So I'd like to request the similar structure that we've been doing, which is closing at four, and running the meeting for four fifteen until six PM on Wednesdays, and I've picked three dates that I know so far, no staff have taken off, so I did let the staff know, they've kind of put them on their calendar as a tentative. So November nineteenth, February eleventh, and June tenth, and what we'll do is go over any updates from sales, or the town will go over any concerns that people may have regarding patron issues, or building issues, or anything that's come up. And then summer, of course, is the June meeting, which will focus mostly on the summer reading prep. So I'd like to ask that we be able to do that with your blessing.
Jenny?
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we accept these three dates.
All right.
February eleventh, um, November nineteenth, February eleventh, and June tenth.
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'm, I think I'm the second.
All right, any further discussion? What time would we normally close on those days?
Six.
Six, okay, that's what I thought. Oh, it says it. I have a first, second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstention? All right.
Okay. Did everybody get to read the team?
Did, it's far extensive.
Yeah, very well done.
She was very thorough in getting everything done. So, one of the things that came up with the teams was that they do not feel like the room suits their needs.
Yeah, and that's very sad, and I.
It's twenty years old.
Well, it's.
So in twenty years, teams' preference in colors and stuff have changed.
Yeah, but, but I understand the fact that it looks like it's half a storage room. It's got tables with books where there used to be tables with computers. It, it looks like it's set up for people who are not quite as honored in this building, and we need to change that.
We need.
So she's proposed, um, adding some furniture, painting is a big thing. There are two. Actually, I think there are still three swatches on the wall, uh, the paint colors that are under consideration. She's going to ask the teens to vote on the paint color. So they have asked for a blue, which she's got some nice colors, I think, that would go well with the, the rest of the library. Then in terms of furnishings, the idea is maybe to add some cafe tables, like, um, sort of the high-top tables and chairs. There was a mention of maybe being able to fit booth-style seating in there, like a one table with two booth-style seats. Um, they had also requested maybe some soft seating, like the rockers that she, she put in her appendix, or beanbag type seating, but a sturdy beanbag. Um, they requested doing maybe some gaming, which we could wheel this television in and have a gaming system. So, and maybe some displays, but I think what, what would be good is to think about how much shelving we can add in that room where the computers used to be. We could remove the lights, add some shelving under that that matches the other side, which is the audiobooks.
Get rid of the huge thing in the middle of the room?
Get rid of the huge thing in the middle of the room. Um, it's, if it's possible, maybe in those two inset areas, put shelving in both of those.
That was a fire code thing that we had to check?
Um, I think that they said we couldn't close it off, but it could be shelved.
Oh, it couldn't have a door?
Couldn't have a door. But it can, I think if it's open, it can be.
The two alcoves.
Yeah, have shelving in the alcoves. So we're working with Demco, um, to get sort of a plan, because they do offer some design services if you spend a certain amount with them, ten thousand, and he said it doesn't have to meet the ten thousand, they can help with a little bit of the design, but, um, I've worked with them before in doing the teen room in Plymouth, and they had a whole layout. They could look at the square footage and kind of tell you what you could sit in there. So right now, our representative from Demco, Manny, um, he's looking at things to see what we can do based on her, based on our wants, and he'll come back with a quote for prices.
One of the things under tables and seating, the second paragraph, that we're storing, um, some materials, not unusable tables, can we get rid of those through surplus? Because the historical commission's voting on tonight to get rid of some tables from twenty.
Yeah, if I send a list to Colleen for the select board, they can vote on it. Um, I did that with the stuff we just, Paul's actually gonna take the metal shelving to the transfer station to recycle it. So I just have to have a list of what we're trying to get out. Like the, the old projector, I have to put on a list because that's now surplus. So, yeah, I can definitely make a list of things that.
They're not usable, are they broken?
Um.
Or just not conveniently used?
They're not convenient to use.
So they might be able to be used by someone else, that's why it can be surplus.
So I know, uh, before Tracey left, she told me, talk to all the department heads, see if anybody else can use them first, and then they can be listed as surplus.
Yeah, the commission's gonna do the same thing with the five tables we bought after the hundred and fiftieth anniversary. They're just too heavy.
Yeah.
But that, you know, the DPW has used them for the rabies thing that they have, and I think Fire Department has used them at some point in time. So there may be somebody else who will want them.
Yeah, I think she's talking about the tables that are currently under the lights. Because we have moved, we moved everything that was temporarily stored in there out, so right now, there's no storage in there.
Oh.
Of tables and chairs, it's all back into the chair closet. Yeah, we rearranged the chair closet, so everything's back in there.
So do we need support for motion to?
So I don't have any figure listed. Do you want me to come back with a figure once we get stuff from Manny? Or do you want to just support the whole idea first?
Yes, I think one of the, I think we should support the whole idea because there are a lot of different aspects to this, either or type of thing. And support the, then we need just like a list of what's gonna, what's gonna leave, and what's gonna, what's gonna do as a replacement, and even the color that they're gonna paint, we're gonna have the walls painted.
So an actual plan?
Yeah, a, um, book, a checklist of what, what they want to do.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it'll be ready for the October one, I'm hoping Manny can get it ready, but October, November.
Once you know, then we could get the design element through the other company and everything. It'd be nice, maybe by this win, early this winter, or would you, you know, like maybe December or something like that.
Definitely a good time, yeah.
Okay, sounds great. I moved that the.
I was gonna say, we're just, was there a thought as far as where we're going to fund this renovation out of?
I think the remaining Chase money was brought up.
Money, okay.
And I'm not sure what the, is it a service that's got, is potentially unusable, too?
No, I think that's, this is more, um, psych stuff. Usually, the service money are used more for programming.
Okay.
STEM stuff and things like that.
And then the only other thing I would, although I didn't see it in here, but I know that tastes change pretty quickly with, um.
Yes.
Young adults, so I would still caution in the design to just make sure that we have something that will last probably a little longer than the taste. Well, maybe not quite that long, but, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Something that two years from now isn't really going to show that it's out of date with.
I think the blues that she's picked is, they're pretty like.
Yeah.
And the blue-gray colors?
Yeah, so they're not gonna.
Jarry.
Necessarily go out of fashion or be.
I agree, because the red, I just can't stand.
Yeah.
My mother painted my bedroom one year, and I called it blood red. The most horrid color.
Yes, there's a lot of acid green and stuff like that, that was remnants of the seventies and eighties. So I moved that we, the director to continue pursuing updating of the teen room, formerly known as the young adult room.
Yes.
Second.
I have a first, excuse me, I have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? All right. Capital planning.
All right, this is, um, something that the town sent over, um, so they're working on the capital plan. They've moved up the timeline so that now capital project requests and five-year plans are due Friday, October third, to the town administrator and finance director, then they will be discussing them and meeting with all the department heads. Um, and then it will go to vote, uh, I think it will go to the select board, and they'll finalize the capital plan. So I think they're really trying to get a handle on what all the buildings need, so I did make sort of a list of things to think about, and I was going to talk to Paul about a lot of these, um, so things I'd like to add to our capital plan, um, we need to really think about the boiler. And I think that should come first as a priority, because we were told by Standish that it's basically being propped up, and it's gonna need replacement, so they've actually given us a quote. I believe it is on for FY, or was on for FY twenty-seven, so I just want to make sure that stays on, and that Paul, knows that that's a priority. Um, some of the other things that we need to think about are the, um, condensers for the HVAC. Both of them had issues this season, and they were, I want to say, Mike, one of the technicians, said he MacGyvered it, so I was a little concerned that maybe we need to think about looking at the condensers as well.
Weren't we looking at the HVAC in general?
Um, we looked at the controls, we got a, just for the controls, we got a quote for like thirty-something thousand, but nobody's looked at the condensers.
Okay.
So that's a thing that needs to be looked at, um. Then some perennial things that always come up, like carpeting, lighting, painting. I don't know if we need to get the windows assessed at some point, and look at the windows and the shape that they're in. So maybe that's another thing that can go on the plan. Eventually, the, the Bessemer doors out here, the sliding doors are going to need a new motor. But they have said that just, you know, wait until that dies, so I don't know if, um. Oh, that's pretty much what he told me. He said, all of the trucks have the motors. Just, it's gonna fail, just, when it fails, just call us up. So that was pretty much what I was told by the technician, I'm like, oh, why don't you get me a quote to replace it now? No, no, just wait.
It's like the battery on your car.
Yeah.
We'd like an estimate of what the cost would be when that happens, and we realize that if it's three years after the quote, that it would be more, but I mean, just to get us an idea what the quote is for this.
I'm like, can I get a quote? No, oh, I would wait, I'd just wait.
Just trustees want to know what it would cost today if we had to do it, and that way, we know that if we didn't do it today, the price would be different, or something like that.
Next time they're out, they usually do testing, so I'll nudge them.
Ballpark figure.
There was mention that the fire, fire control panel, which the components that were faulty were replaced, but the motherboard has not been replaced. When they came back last time, the batteries had drained down more than they had expected for a year, so that was a potential, like, if the batteries continue to drain like that, it could be the motherboard. So we might have to replace the motherboard, so I can get them to give us a quote for that, too.
That's like a Friday when we're not, nobody's around, kind of thing.
And then there's, and that I think is more facilities-related stuff, and then in terms of our stuff, like the teen room renovation, looking at maybe a potential children's room renovation. Um, server equipment, I don't think has been swapped out very regularly, like the stuff that we have. The sales stuff gets swapped out pretty regularly, they have projects, but I don't think that our main components have been swapped out. So I'd like to get a quote at some point for dealing with the server room, and then the waterfalls, um, I know one was rebuilt, but the other one wasn't. But, again, these are things that can be on a future plan, they don't necessarily need to be on the five-year plan. And obviously, if I was gonna pick one that was important, would be the irrigation system.
Casey? What did you say?
The irrigation system.
Irrigation, oh, yeah.
So I don't think that would necessarily fall under, I don't know if it would fall under Paul. I mean, it is facilities, but.
Field, um, yeah, site.
So, what I'll do is, you know, if you have some things you want me to really focus on, I'll go to Paul and we'll talk about how we want to get that on the five-year plan.
And the roof is scheduled for this fiscal year.
The roof is already scheduled, I think they've already put that out for good, or will be soon.
So I think that anything to do with the heating system, we need to deal with before, especially since this is September. But, I mean, it needs to be taken care of so we're not closing the building because we have no heat. And then some of the other things, like lighting and painting and the windows would be stuff, but I do think the sliding doors need to be high on that list because it's entry and exit, you know.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it'll meet the threshold.
I don't think it will.
To replace the motor, so that might just be, we take care of that.
I think that's why they're telling you what they're telling you, because I'm trying to think, it's not a.
Big money. But just so we know, because we do have a maintenance budget, which could come out of, but we don't want it to.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna end up in capital, if we decided to replace the whole door.
Yeah, some of the things that we need to consider is that even though these were energy efficient, but they were energy efficient for twenty years ago, so is, are we gonna have a saving in terms of heat and air conditioning if the doors are replaced, or the windows are replaced? Or are we gonna do it slow? Or we're gonna do it slowly, um, you know, over periods, but.
I mean, that's why I'm thinking about these things, like how future do you wanna go with some of these things?
Well, I would agree with you Nancy, as far as for me, the boiler, the HVAC, cuz I would have, I thought we had talked about. The full HVAC system being twenty years old now, you're nearing end of life, so.
It's also the, we finally got the controls, so they pretty much work, but there are a lot of things that are quirky about the way the thing was installed and. And that we've replaced over time, but I just have this ominous sensation that.
One day it's gonna-
One day, it's gonna be a major problem and, and part of it's because of the way it was put in by the company.
A lot of the control boxes are failing now.
It's electronic, twenty years of electric, you know, what they, what we installed is not anywhere near what they would install today. I mean, just it's been so many advances, so, but I mean, yeah, heating.
Heating and AC would be my-
But just that, just to have them tell us that we need this for. In the back of our minds about the sliding doors, we just wanna guess what it would cost for the motor, so that we know whether or not we can take it out of our. Regular maintenance budget, or whether or not we have to go to capital for it. Or if Paul has to go to capital for it, you know, I mean, whichever way it goes. But also the fire control panels, that's, you know, public safety right there in the building.
I, and again, I don't know if that, cuz I think the whole fire panel replacement itself was like nine thousand. I don't know if it's gonna-
But still, it's a big chunk out of our.
Well, that's, that's this winter when they'll look again at the, if the battery drained down, right, or late or early spring, I think.
I think it came in February.
Cuz our building grounds is four thousand.
Yeah, we don't have a whole, some of it would have to go under Paul's budget.
So I mean, we just have to have that, and we're being prudent, cuz we always are, so. They should be cooperative with it.
Alright, so I'll definitely talk to Paul about those two particular things, and then see where he thinks about for some of the other, like windows, painting. Carpeting and stuff like that.
Let me just ask if, if we put in a well, or if we do something about our water system, is that within capital? Is that our responsibility?
Under ARPA projects? I don't know what the status of it is, or if the money's still there.
I'd really like to know whether this is a priority for anybody.
It would seem that the amount of money we spent on water.
I mean, it's, it's been quite obvious with our reports that this is not something that. We should sustain. But without support from the town, what do we do?
Was it, was it a capital, or wasn't it a capital?
Is there a board meeting?
Yeah, but this is.
So I don't, I haven't heard anything about the well lately.
Maybe we should ask again.
I was, yeah, sorry.
Actually, we're gonna be, we're not gonna be doing irrigation, so it makes sense, it makes sense to put the well in before we update the system.
Yeah, the system needs to be looked at, because it's not functioning the way it should.
Well, I thought they were.
I think there's a problem with some of the heads, there's a problem with-
No, I meant with the well, I thought that that was going through.
It was supposed to.
Well, it was talked about months ago.
Remember us talking about last month, yeah.
And then, I haven't heard anything about where they're gonna locate it, when they're gonna start the project, anything like that.
And we do have the DBW taking out more plantings in the back, so I would assume it would be in the back sometime, cuz our Semtic is in the front.
I haven't heard anything, I don't know if they have the scope out yet.
Nobody spit out with stakes and red plastic or anything, orange plastic.
We're gonna be out there with the hose, aren't we?
Yes, we're gonna bring. Gallon jugs from home.
Alright, so capital planning, so those would be at root unless you had some other things to- Reimbursement for Jennifer Jones?
So I had the cost from the luncheon for the um, visit with Maureen Amiott. The sales tour. I wanted to see if you'd approved, taking that out of gift supplies. For reimbursement, it was three hundred ninety-two forty-nine.
I think that was a nice day for us.
People seemed happy, they didn't wanna leave, they were trying to clean up.
Yeah, it was true, but it, it was nice to have other libraries in here. I know we have from time to time, but it was a little more personal than a big sales meeting.
Yeah, and it was a little more special with the visit from the MBLC.
And they, they all seem happy to be here, which is nice. Um, I moved that we reimburse the director three hundred ninety-two dollars and forty-nine cents for the.
Luncheon.
Luncheon event that we had here for the ML. From, and the money's coming from?
Gift supplies.
Gift supplies?
That seems the easiest place to take it.
Still seconding? Any further discussion, none, all in favor? All opposed, abstentions, alright.
So, related to reimbursements, I just wanna let you know that the town has now a P card, I don't know if I mentioned that previously. A procurement card, so they have a credit card that can be used for expenses. So they're encouraging us now to, instead of putting it on our own credit card, to use the town credit card. So we probably will not have as many reimbursements going forward.
Uh, Dr. Bernstein Memorial.
Okay, so we have the items in, and I know Nancy had worked on the plaque. Um, and Doris has been asking what the status of the project is, and we were talking about it in the children's room the other day. And where we had originally envisioned it being on the right-hand side of the room as you walk in, underneath the windows. Um, you have the catalog computer, and then you have an open space on the wall. We were gonna put it on that open space on the wall, right behind the public computers. In thinking about it though, if we ever decide to do a future renovation of the children's room. Teresa and I have been throwing ideas back and forth of how would you accommodate, you know, she's at the point where there's no more space. She has reached her shelving capacity, pretty much.
Twenty years, they said we would.
Yep, and so, in thinking about where could we add more shelving, or where could we change things up? The thought was maybe making that whole right side be a middle grade area. So getting some high-top tables for that side and changing that around future. But would we be serving our purpose if we put a children's thing, like a preschool children's thing over there? Where it would get used on the other side with picture books. So my thought was, if we could do a little bit of renovation in the children's room by moving some shelving. Um, and putting it, so currently, the parenting section has some high shelves. And then their picture book shelving starts low on that wall, if we move the picture book shelving to the wall where the parenting is, we take the parenting shelves down. And on that wall, put the sensory toys. The parenting collection could go on some mobile carts, which I have included the cost to. From Demco to get some mobile bookshelves, she would need three. Mobile carts to fit the parenting books. This way, if we decide to do some further renovations in the children's room, and we don't necessarily need the mobile carts anymore. Those mobile carts could be repurposed in other areas.
Denim blue?
Um, denim blue, there's different colors, I can show you all the colors if you'd like to see them, but I was thinking blue might be a good way to. Sort of match some, like especially if they go, maybe they go get purposed in the YA room for something, or the teen room, sorry. The teen room for something, and then, you know, this sort of matches the color of the wall, there's, there were green, there's just plain gray too. We could certainly get the gray to match the shelving.
Don't want blood red?
Although I like fun colors, so I would go with lime green, purple, I would do it, but I don't think they had purple.
Would be under, would that be under facilities, or?
So we'd ask Paul to help us out with, I mean, I'm fairly handy at removing some things. So I could definitely probably remove some shelving. But I could ask Paul to just give us a hand with taking.
And the money for the carts will come from?
State aid, I guess.
They come from where?
State aid or gifts, either one could, I think, be purposed for them. State aid for projects.
We have sufficient funds for it.
The carts? And if we needed to have? Labor, or anything like that?
I mean, if, if we needed to, it could come out, I think, buildings and ground.
Alright, so then.
Where is Demco?
Demco? Their headquarters?
Uh, they're a national.
I think they're in Ohio though, aren't they?
It's been a while since I ordered.
Been probably twenty years since we ordered anything from them.
I mean, I can shop around.
No, no, I'm not saying that, I'm just.
You talking about the shipping?
Do we need a vote, or?
Um, yeah, I thi- yeah, I think we should, yeah, we're doing something major here.
Okay, so, take a motion?
I moved that we follow the directions from the memorandum of September seventeenth from the director. To relocate the proposed location of Bernstein Memorial. And do any work or re mov- moving of shelving that needs, is necessary.
Is there a second? Any further discussion, all in favor? All opposed, abstentions, alright. Next meeting date.
Now, I have something else I'd like to bring up, um, under the.
Under what?
Subject to change, whatever, anyway, I don't know if you guys are aware, but on September second. There was a town meeting at the, um, at the police station. And it became apparent that there were going to be so many people there, it was insufficient.
It was a select board meeting, right?
Yes, correct, select board, sorry. Um, and they called here, Jennifer was off that day, Teresa handled the situation. Quickly got the room ready. We were able to, um. Handle the crowd, they were here until ten o'clock that night, Teresa stayed in order to secure the building. I think that's really kind of above and beyond, uh, and I've, I've written a letter. Thanking her for it, that I would like to have go into her file, now, this may be not above and beyond, so if you guys don't agree.
Sort of like a emergency situation because it was not-
Emergency situation. It was the water at La Barron Hills. And she had to set up the room with minutes' notice.
She was helped by Cindy and Christina as well.
But unfortunately, they were not aware that she was here, I think, when they left, and didn't even let her know they were leaving.
Which they have, they have noticed and mentioned.
Yeah, they have mentioned that. Nancy, what do you think?
I, I think, yeah. Teresa has come to the point where she is very capable of. She understands all of the influential things that happen within the community and how the library is here to rescue people every once in a while. This was definitely a rescue.
Yeah, it was.
So is there, as a side note, is there some sort of set, I'm not talking a community meeting or any. But as far as a governing select board meeting or something, is there some sort of a? Do we have something in place that if a meeting is meeting here that goes after hours? Like I've had some towns where technically the chair of, we'll say the select board is the one responsible for locking up the building at that point. If it goes after hours, but they are considered a town employee or-
If it goes after hours and they're not going into executive session, late cam closes. But if they're going into executive session, late cam leaves, and then it's a come but.
So you have to know what their agenda is prior to, it'd have to be posted.
We have to look at their agenda, so, um. The ones that have gone into executive session, I believe, prior to Andrew. Like Bob News didn't really have a key to the building, but Ari did have a key to the building, and he would lock up, and I know Christina. Kotsaritas, when she did the fire station building committee, would lock up after, so they knew how to lock up that side of the building.
I think that would be something to look into as far as what would be, because it's, it certainly isn't going to be a unique occurrence. I mean, the building is available for, and I'm not talking community groups or after-hours groups, but the board is, the select board, town government, yeah. I mean, if they're meeting here and their meetings can't necessarily end at eight o'clock, just because we've closed. That there should be, but the staff shouldn't be responsible for doing that.
Well, should we have a code available, or a temporary code for them to set the alarm system?
So Andrew has a key and a code. I've given it to him, I just-
So it could be the town administrator then? So ZBA meets here and they're, they have access?
They have access and usually, so if they go into executive session, I might stay. Um, Teresa has stayed too, so.
But I think we should look at what would be the, because I mean, it's obvious not something that's, again, unique. And you shouldn't be responsible to stay here for zoning board of appeals. There should be, you know, some sort of a however we want to set it up, type of thing, but I think we should look at that and see what's-
Should be under policy for, even if it's like unexpected meetings, or a policy for meetings for that to be with town government.
Yeah, we can revisit the meeting room policy.
I think it would be good, I know, like, I mean, I've had different, in my towns, they've, they've all been different, so I mean, I don't have one. But I know like in one town, the, um, the, the. Say that I'll use the select board was an example as far as they were considered town employees. So the chair of that board was responsible for making sure the building was locked up and closed. Or the ZBA chair would be responsible for doing it.
And the town administrator's always present for their meetings anyways.
Not necessarily knowing.
Oh, okay, so then we can't just have, say, would he be-
No, I mean, you'd have to like, I mean, another town-
This has to be within the, that actual board.
I mean, another town, the custodian, which I know is not the case here, but the custodian of the building was here, so, I mean, they, they were the ones. But there should be something that we should look at, that I think, cuz I don't think it's fair to the staff to. Stay till ten o'clock for a meeting.
Unexpected too, so I'm sure the reason she stayed was, in other instances, she stayed because she was in charge of the building, and she felt that responsibility.
I mean, she did great, this is enough, I just think that even in that circumstance, she shouldn't have had to.
I don't, I don't think it's, it should be required, you know, it's, it's something that. If they have a code and a key, they should be able to, but in most of the time, they don't go into executive session, so late cam.
Right, and it would be posted in their agenda prior to them, you know, we see, we'd be aware, they'd be aware. So do we vote to send the letter to Teresa?
I don't think so.
I moved that we send the letter of appreciation to Teresa for her response. her response to the September second select board unexpected meeting at the library.
All right, first and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? And, uh, extensions, it passes. Um, I had one thing I didn't know, just trying to get ahead of things. Are, are the snow people coming back? I know we can't vote 'cause it wasn't on, but. I figured this way at least.
She has booked a meeting here in the local history room at the end of the month for planning, so we might know more after that. I think it's the same day as the garden club's thing. So hopefully we'll know more.
I heard they, I just didn't know if we needed to vote for approval for the yard again.
Probably would have to, but I don't know the plans yet. I've offered again to like be a place where they can bring the snowmen for people to pick up, like people can pick them up here, like we can have times and dates and things for pick up and drop off. Just because I think, um, what they're doing is really nice for the community, so. But I haven't heard specific plans about where they want, I think they want to put the snow people in the same places as last year. So I guess we would probably wanna do a vote. Do you wanna do that in October?
Well, you know, I just figured last year we were kinda.
I don't know if we have to vote every year, it's like, we don't vote every year that the Lakeville Arts and Music Festival can move our white benches around. Once we've decided it's part of the thing, it just becomes part of the thing. It would be if they did something dramatically different, um, needed access to other buildings or something like that, then it would be other people that would be voting. But just that's more like an informational thing, so we need to be kept abreast of that.
All right, next meeting date. We stick to our fourth, that would be the twenty-second of October.
I think that's a sales meeting.
Wouldn't they be the fifteenth, the third Wednesday of the?
Fifteenth is, uh, third, but.
I don't have, I don't have their dates on the calendar yet, but I'm assuming sales is usually the third.
I think it's on the, I wrote it down on the twenty-second.
Well, there's the twenty-ninth, that's.
Let me go check. Let me grab my.
We'll be meeting the fourth Wednesday.
The twenty-ninth would give me an extra week. Maybe I could be here.
You are gonna be here?
I, I, I don't know. But do you know what the towns, how they feel about virtual attendance on meetings at this point?
How they feel about what?
Like Zoom, Zoom attendance.
I don't know if they voted on that. I know it's continued statewide, but.
Yeah, here it is, Wednesday, October twenty-second, membership in Lawler.
What's on the twenty-second?
That's different.
Members, sales membership meeting at the Lawler branch.
So how's the twenty-ninth then?
That gives you more time to recuperate. Lakeville Library Board Trustees will be meeting at nine AM on October twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth, all right.
Uh, Jennifer, do you know what the, how the town feels about Zoom attendance for meetings? Is that allowed at this point?
I believe it's still.
The historical commission's doing, been doing call-ins, like when we needed a quorum.
Yeah, I think it was, I think the state extended that.
The state did, yeah.
Well, I'll be here one way or the other.
All right, so meeting on the twenty-ninth, otherwise if there's nothing else, I will take a motion to adjourn at ten fifteen.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Thank you very much for filming us.